16, 2007, meeting in the Sylena City Commission. Will a clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Joka.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Peck.
Here.
Commissioner Perny.
Here.
Commissioner Vanier.
Here.
I'd like to invite everyone to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of this land, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on today's agenda is the citizens' open forum. Time set aside for any citizens who would like to address the commission on items that are not on today's official agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward? Seeing none, we will move on to awards and proclamations. There are none of those today, nor are there any public hearings in items scheduled for a certain time. So, first item of business will be the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of July 9, 2007.
A little note to the minutes, the meeting last week adjourned at 4:45 and not 3:45.
Mayor, I'd move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second. Motion is to approve the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That passes five to zero. We will continue on with development business.
Item 7.1, first reading ordinance number 07-10,399, amending section 42-83, the Slina Code pertaining to fences, walls, and hedges.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Commissioners, this is a proposed text amendment to the zoning ordinance, specifically the section of the code that deals with fences, walls, and hedges. From our research, that code has been substantially unchanged since about 1966. In the year 2000, in an effort to look at all the responsibilities and things that were occurring in the building services area, a decision was made to stop reviewing and issuing fence permits. So, the requirement that a fence permit be obtained prior to installation of a fence was eliminated, but the fence code itself remained unchanged. And then in 2004, the fence code was moved from the Building Code, Chapter 8, to the Zoning Ordinance, Chapter 42, and again, no substantive changes were made at that time. The purpose of this text amendment is to try to get the code to reflect more closely what's actually happening in reality in the community, also to get some guidance as to where, what situations and locations the commission feels barbed wire fence is appropriate, and try to address legitimate security concerns. And what we found was that the ordinance was set up based on what zoning district property was in, and not looking directly at what the use of the property was. And we do have some facilities that are public facilities that may need to be secured that are in a variety of districts. The water plant, for instance, is in an R3 multifamily residential district. So, we don't feel that just regulating it by zoning district is as appropriate as looking at what uses have a legitimate need to be secured with barbed wire fences. And so, the text amendment that you have in front of you provides a list of additional uses that would have the ability to use barbed wire on top of standard fencing regardless of what zoning district they are located in. And that would include certainly airport facilities, armories, and other military installations that we have, contractor storage yards, any type of correctional facility that we would have, whether it's the Celine County Jail or juvenile detention facility, our public water and wastewater facilities, communication towers, secured storage facilities, and then any place where there might be vehicles or equipment fleet storage where you might have a need for that type of secured storage. The planning commission discussed some other locations and didn't want to go so far as to say any type of retail business location or recreational facility as well, although we do know there are some existing barbed wire fences in those types of locations. So, this is coming to you kind of as a cleanup amendment. The planning commission held three meetings and discussions on this and voted to recommend the amendment you see before you today. I'd be happy to address any questions.
Questions, Mr. Andrew. Seeing none at the moment, I would like to invite any public comment on the proposed ordinance, if there is any. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I'd move for approval on first reading ordinance number 07-10399, amending section 42-83 of the Slina Code pertaining to fences, walls, and hedges.
Second.
Motion is to approve ordinance 07-10399, amending this pertinent section of the Slina Code dealing with fences, walls, and hedges. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That passes five to zero. We will now continue on to items of administration.
Item 8.1, second reading ordinance number 07-10,397, amending Chapter 41, Article 2, Division 3, Sections 41-62 through 41-64, 41-66, and 41-67 pertaining to water conservation.
This was adopted last week on first reading, and we've had no additional comments in the interim. I would entertain any public comment, though, if there is any additionally. Seeing none, we'll come back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I'd move that ordinance number 07-10,397 pertaining to water conservation be approved on second reading.
Second. The motion is to approve ordinance 07-10397 pertaining to water conservation on second reading. Will a clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Larson.
Aye.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry, Mayor. I apologize, if I may. There was some discussion at last week's meeting regarding the extent of those persons potentially responsible and potentially chargeable, if you will, for any violations of the restrictions. And the version that you do have before you, if you look at section 41-67, did include proposed language that would limit that potential responsibility to the customer of record, the water customer of record, and the owner, lesssee, tenor, occupant known to the city to be responsible, eliminating some of the concerns that were expressed at your last meeting. So, I'm sorry to be slow to mention, but we should probably refer to that as amended if that would be your wish, as you consider it on second reading.
Good point. Is that agreeable to the motion maker? Yes. Okay. So, motion is to approve ordinance 07-10397 as amended, then. We'll still need a roll call vote on that, though.
Commissioner Larson.
Aye.
Commissioner Peck.
Aye.
Commissioner Perny.
Aye.
Commissioner Vanier.
Aye.
Mayor Joka.
Aye.
Item 8.2, authorize an agreement with Wilson &amp; Company for the development of an East Sylena Master Utility Plan, project number 07-2655.
Ms. Tasker.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The East Sylena Master Plan was prepared by HNTB of Kansas City, Missouri, in early 2003. It's located on the northeast side of the city with the boundary, the north side being Country Club Road, the south side Crawford Street, and on both sides of Holmes Road and to the west of the East Dry Creek Interceptor. The entire area is approximately 260 acres. The plan defined and mapped the 100-year floodplain for the entire drainage basin known as the East Dry Creek Tributary Number One. And the plan also identified a floodplain area that could be turned into a public parkway. And it also laid out potential street development patterns for this area. The plan was officially adopted and amended to the comprehensive plan by the City Commission in November of 2003. Staff has discussed this project and concluded that an area-wide or basin-wide solution for the drainage, sanitary sewer, and water improvements makes sense, and it would be very beneficial for the development of this area. And we feel that no one, property owner or developer, planning to develop 10 or 15 acres at a time, is capable of initiating and constructing the improvements necessary. The planning concept behind the East Sylena Master Plan project was to avoid this incremental planning for the area and to have the city of Sylena take the lead on the planning, design, and construction of the storm drainage, sanitary sewer, and water improvements. Developers would be responsible for their proportionate share of these improvements while developing in line with the plan that was approved. The overall goal of city staff is to provide a systematic approach with phased options to provide the drainage, sanitary sewer, and water improvements. The East Sylena Master Utility Plan will provide the city and developers with a planning document that identifies, recommended sanitary sewer and water improvements along with associated costs for this area. The storm drainage solution provides sufficient stormwater detention for the downstream area based on the 100-year floodplain. In January of 2001, the city received a drainage analysis that was prepared by Konza Natural Resource Consultants. This was utilized by HNTB in their master plan and will also be utilized by Wilson &amp; Company in the master utility plan. A looped water line must be constructed from Country Club Road to Crawford Street, and a trunk sanitary sewer will extend from the East Dry Creek Interceptor to the west and then back to the southwest to pick up the entire area. In conjunction with this, our intent is to eliminate two existing wastewater pump stations. The agreement before you today is written in a cost-plus-fixed fee format with an amount not to exceed of $25,500. The project is estimated to take about 60 days and would be complete by mid-September with a final report around mid-October. The funding for this agreement was allocated from the 2007 planning category of the capital improvements program in the amount of $30,000. This master planning approach conforms with our current strategic plan. It is recommended that the City Commission approve the agreement with Wilson &amp; Company, engineers and architects of Sylena, Kansas, in the amount not to exceed of $25,500. Jason Slickburn with Wilson &amp; Company is here today, and we would be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Questions of Ms. Tasker? Or of the consultant?
Seems like in the study session, we also talked about farther south and west of this is that that would be delayed to some future time before we talked about your studies down there?
Yes, in the study session, that area was for sanitary sewer improvements along the Markley-Magnolia area. This is to the north of there and for water, sewer, and storm drainage.
Is the plan to develop this just as soon as this is done, this master plan's done, or what kind of timeframe are we looking at?
We currently have two to three developers that are interested in moving forward with projects in this area, and our intent is to look at the overall area and come up with a plan that's beneficial for the long haul as opposed to each small developed piece.
And this whole area is inside the city limits?
No.
It's not? Okay.
It's just a Holmes Road, right?
It's just a Holmes Road. Is Holmes?
It's beyond Holmes Road a little bit.
Additional questions? The staff or the consultant? Thank you very much. I'd like to entertain any public comment, if there is any.
Todd Wells, 221 South Morris Drive. And I've been working particularly on this project for almost five years. I attended when the HNTB came out with the master plan. I have an interest and will close in the next seven to 10 days on a couple of parcels that are included in that, which would be an eight-acre parcel and a 10-acre parcel that are not located within the city of Sylena yet. One would go up against Holmes Road next to the church, and then the other eight-acre parcel directly behind, which would be Chuckar Court and Prairie Ridge. The interesting thing about this whole thing coming together right now is I can remember many planning sessions with the city, especially with Dennis now at the Chamber of Commerce, trying to look for affordable housing. And as a real estate consultant here in town, one of the biggest problems we've had with getting affordable housing starts with the lots. And in the past, what's always happened is the city has always went in and approved 20 lots here and 10 lots here and 15 lots here. And what has happened is the builders buy those up pretty frequently. Same as out on Magnolia Hills, we start out with 26 lots. To be able to sell 26 lots in a four-month period is pretty big. The general public doesn't usually get a hold of them. By putting this all together, I know that I've spoken with Rex Vanier, who owns the large 100-acre parcel directly behind it. I do know that there's some interest in the parcel of the 33 acres just to the east of Holmes Road, the eight acres and the 10 acres that I have purchased, and then again, the realigning of Holmes Road in the master plan that they did. And working with staff, Dean Andrew, after looking at HNTB's plan, I'm really excited to see Wilson's bid of $25,000 because I know that fits within the well of the budget of what staff was looking for when they took it from HNTB to give it to Wilson. And so, I really am pretty excited about that. Again, I've attended numerous meetings going clear back from five years ago in trying to get this piece to move forward because, again, as being a developer, building some homes, and real estate agent, trying to see where is Sylena's growth. And with it going south, I believe if somebody moves to our community, unless you're going north of town, you're outside the city limits because we have some drainage issues, no infrastructure to the west. All of the building has to be in the south, and with being able to push through what they did on Schilling Road in Ohio, that's started that sector and then Magnolia Hills. I think the next place is how do we get some buildable lots up in East Sylena? And this is really, I'm excited because I have four of all the master landowners talking to each other right now, and they're wanting this to move forward. And I think what's always been on hold before is we couldn't get everybody all together. We had several different owners. Some wanted to develop, some didn't want to develop, some wanted to come into the city limits, and now some don't. Again, I can tell you that there's probably, out of whatever acreage is available there, the 100-acre plan, the 33-acre plan, and 15-acre plan sitting there. Each and every one of them would want to do something. As soon as the infrastructure was set in place, those would be developable as fast as we could get that done. So, again, I'm excited even to see that it looks like it's on the drawing board, it fits within staff's budget, and that we could actually start putting some buildable lots up in East Sylena.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any additional public comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission for action.
If I'm understanding the timeframe on this, I guess this is almost another question, but I just want a confirmation. Talking about 60 days for the basic study and then 15 days after we've had time to review it, I guess. So, altogether, we're talking about this being around 90 days time period. So, it would still be this fall and, or at least this year, so time to do something, potentially do something in development line in next year.
Yeah, I think so. And as Martha mentioned, we're going to be focusing on the trunk lines, water, and wastewater, which are the key things because there's enough acreage. In Sylena, we don't have development interest that's so large that someone could come in and develop all this at one time. So, if we're going to continue to develop in our housing areas where we have, you know, where we've seen the patterns, we're going to have to be out in front on some of the trunk line type issues. And if we can do that, we can bite-size off the other pieces and work with the local folks and see if we can get more activity.
Just to clarify something, did I misunderstand Commissioner Vanier? None of this or all of this is outside the city limits? When he asked, inside the city limits?
All of the area that's in the East Sylena Master Plan, except for just around the First Christian Church there, is outside the city limits.
Okay.
And what we have tended to do is sit down with people and talk about annexation when we have some good numbers to discuss with them about infrastructure and their relative shares. And then, once we have that information, generally, we will want to annex them into the city before it goes any farther, but most folks don't want to commit to annexation till they know what the obligations they'll have. So, once we have this information, I think we'll be sitting down with them and talking about, they all want to be in the city, it's just premature right now to commit to anything.
Okay. Thank you.
Any public comment? There being none? I'm sorry, I've closed that part of the meeting anyway. Oh, well. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I would move we approve project number 07-2655, which would enter us into an agreement with Wilson &amp; Company for the development of an East Sylena Master Utility Plan.
Second. Motion is to approve an agreement with Wilson &amp; Company for the development of an East Sylena Master Utility Plan. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That passes five to zero.
Item 8.3, first reading ordinance number 07-10,398, approving the issuance of general obligation bonds by the Sylena Airport Authority.
Ms. Binkston?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. We have with us this afternoon Shelley Swanson, the manager of administration and finance for the Sylene Airport Authority. And Shelley would be best suited to comment on the actual project components of this proposed general obligation bond. And if you give her sufficient travel time to the lectern, I'm sure she'd be happy to answer any questions. The city manager may wish to comment on how this integrates with the economic development strategic plan that you considered just this past week. I'll try to speak briefly here to the more mundane legal aspects, but as you might know, the Sylene Airport Authority was established in 1965, shortly after the announcement of the closure of the Schilling Air Force Base. And in doing that, that was under authority of state legislation adopted at about that same time. And in that legislation, the authority was given the ability to issue its own general obligation bonds with the added aspect in that when they determine that they wish to do that, it is then incumbent upon them to present you with a resolution indicating that desire, and then it is up to the city commission to examine that as well and to take one of three actions, either to disapprove the resolution, or to unconditionally approve the resolution by an ordinance that you would adopt, or to approve the authority's resolution and call for its publication as the initial step in a potential protest and referendum scenario. The request before you today is that you approve the, or give an unconditional approval to the proposed general obligation bond issue. Just last week, July 11, the Board of Directors of the Authority adopted a resolution approving the issuance of bonds not to exceed $9,765,000 to pay the cost of certain capital improvements located at the Sylene Airport and Industrial Center. And if I may, just to go through those briefly, it would be the acquisition, construction, improvement, furnishing, and equipping of a new hangar, to be known as Hangar 600, and various storage hangars, improvement of the airport's north ramp area, including building acquisition, HVAC improvements to various buildings, acquisition of equipment, improvements to airport perimeter road, engineering for main taxiway reconstruction, and a study of the airport and industrial center drainage system. The total cost of the project is estimated to be $10,608,000, with approximately $843,000 being provided by grants from the Federal Aviation Administration. The project would be initially funded through the issuance of general obligation temporary notes, and this is certainly a key component of the, not only the new Sylene Economic Development Strategic Plan, but also the development of the Sylene Aviation Service Center concept that you have been briefed about. The project has been, and the financing, have been developed and structured with the assistance of the Authority's public finance advisors, which are the same as the city's financial advisors, George K. Baum &amp; Company. And bond counsel will be Gilmore &amp; Bell, again, same bond counsel as utilized by the city. On the fiscal note, you'll see one important distinction there. The, as you know, general obligation bonds are generally associated with the full faith and credit of the issuing entity. In this case, it is the full faith and credit of the Sylene Airport Authority that is backing this general bond issue. By statute and simply by practice, it does not, these bonds do not constitute a debt or an obligation of the city of Sylena. Might also be interested to note that this is a step made possible by also the action of the 2007 Kansas Legislature when it expanded the limit on the Authority's general obligation bonding capacity from 3% to 10% of the assessed valuation of all the taxable tangible property within the city. And you'll see attached to your materials there that calculation of how that now relates to that newly established capacity. As I say, I'd be happy to answer any questions that I can, and I'm sure Ms. Swanson and Mr. Gage would be happy to elaborate also.
Any questions of Mr. Binkston? Or of Ms. Swanson?
Again, I'm curious about timeframe. How fast would some of these improvements occur after this financing begins?
Faster than I can walk up here, probably. Michelle Swanson, manager of administration and finance, Sylene Airport Authority, 1425 Sherwood, Sylena. Mayor and Commissioners, thank you very much for considering this ordinance today. As far as the timing on the projects, the most significant project, as you can see in terms of dollar-wise and certainly in the development of the Aviation Service Center, Hangar 600, we estimate a completion date of May of 2008. The civil part of this project, actually, we have bid letting coming up on July 26, and we will bid for the construction of the hangar August 14. As far as the airport storage hangar development, that part of the project is really phase one in redeveloping our ability to have storage facilities for what we call box hangars. Right now, our A and B hangars are at capacity, and they have extended their useful life. As some of you may know, they were brought over actually from the old airport, and we've been maintaining them for 40-plus years, and it's time to move on and to do that. So, that would be for 65 hangars to add a few more to the 54 that we have right now, and that would be a 12-to-18-month project. As far as the improvements to the aircraft fueling and pump house apron, that is scheduled for completion in October of '07. Our AIP projects that we're working on, the most significant one, the engineering design for the rehabilitation of the airport's primary taxiway, Taxiway Alpha, that engineering work is scheduled to be completed by the end of the year so that we will be able to compete for grant funds in as early as next year. As far as the fueling system, we're looking at December of '07, as well as the building HVAC improvements to various facilities within the industrial center. The airport drainage study, we have a target date of October of '07, so very short to midterm, with the exception of the first phase of the T-hanger development.
So, basically, the whole $10 million circulates through our economy in a year to 18 months maximum.
That would be correct.
Okay.
Just a minor question. I don't know if this would be for you or Mr. Binkston. There's a word that caught my eye in here because we periodically approve issues of this sort, and all for good reasons. But a couple places, it, for example, under recommended action, unconditionally approving the Authority's resolution. Have we conditionally approved things like this before? Why that unconditional use several places?
That's a good question, Mayor. And it has to do with that statutory structure of your three options. The unconditional approval means that it is simply approved, as contrasted with the option that you have of simply approving it, calling for its as contrasted with the option that you have of simply approving it, calling for its publication, which would then leave it open to that protest, deteriorate, and potentially a referendum election on the question of whether they should be issued or not, if a protest petition would be filed. That would be, that's the only reason for that word, is that, uh, if you approve it, it is approved. If, uh, and that is the only unconditional aspect of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would invite any public comment, if there is any. Commission action?
Mayor, I would move that we approve ordinance 07-10398 on first reading, unconditionally approving the authority's resolution number 0703.
Second.
Motion is to approve ordinance 07-10398, unconditionally approving the issuance of general obligation bonds by the Salina Airport Authority. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That passes five to zero.
Item 8.4, award a contract for the Oakdale Park Tennis Courts Repair and Resurfacing Project Number 07-2636.
Mr. Snyder?
Mayor and Commissioners, due to some information received late last week after the blue sheet had been submitted, I'm changing the recommendation to you today, and I'll speak to that in a minute. Uh, the 2007 Special Parks Fund includes a project to repair and resurface the Ken Nordboe Tennis Courts in Oakdale Park. This project includes crack repair, new net posts for the south courts, and color coating for all eight of the courts. The north four courts are, are actually constructed of asphalt over concrete, while the four south courts are concrete. There's approximately 2,600 feet of cracks of various width and depth that need to be repaired under this contract. A two-part color coating, uh, tennis system surface will then be applied to all of the courts. The last work done on the Oakdale Courts, um, was in '94 on the north courts with a con, uh, excuse me, an asphalt overlay and color coating, and then color coating only in, in '95 on the south courts. Bids were received on Tuesday, July 10th, from two tennis court contractors. Specifications were calling for specific court repair processes, uh, specific net posts, and approved color coat systems. Other crack repair methods were allowed on superficial cracks, uh, with quantities required to be included in the bid. Due to court schedules for some of the high school tournaments and play, completion date of August 22nd was specified. We had, the two bids were Rigs Recreation of Lenexa, Kansas, for $52,947.75, with a completion date of August 22nd. Mid-America Court Works Wichita, Kansas, submitted a bid of $51,220, and they had a completion date of 9/02 of this year. The Mid-America bid proposed using an alternate method on the four south concrete courts, as well as in their bid, they actually amended or adjusted the completion date and, and indicated, as I mentioned, that they could, uh, complete the project by September 2nd. When I visited with the Rigs representative last week, uh, to discuss the project, the start date, completion date, he informed me at that time that they could not guarantee any completion by, uh, August 22nd, may not even be able to start by that time, and said it would be more likely the end of September, when they would have all eight courts completed. Uh, he did not indicate on the bid sheet, which I had, we had specified and filled out the completion date. Um, the Mid-America Court Works had, when they visited with, with staff and sat down and we went through the project prior to the bids, or prior to even submitting a bid, indicated that due to weather restraints and delays, that they may take a little longer than the August 22nd, and therefore indicated the September 2nd, second date on his, uh, bid. The project was approved in the 2007 Special Parks Fund with a budget of $48,000. The Special Parks Fund is generated from taxes collected on sales of alcohol at the local level, with a certain percentage required to be used for parks and recreation projects. Recently, and over the last few years, $100,000 has been budgeted annually for these projects, though receipts are generally in the neighborhood of $140,000 annually. The cash balance in this fund is sufficient to cover the higher bid, as well as several of our other 2007 Special Parks projects are projected to be less than budgeted. Is therefore recommended, the city commission award a contract to Mid-America Court Works Wichita for the Oakdale Park Tennis Court Repair and Resurfacing Projects, Project '07-2636, in the amount of $51,220. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions of Mr. Snyder?
Did you say you did talk to Mid-America again, and, and double-check on that completion date of September 2nd?
Yes. After I had the conversation with the Rigs Company-
Right, right.
-on Friday, I then contacted the Mid-America to confirm their bid-
Okay.
-and their start date, and he did confirm, uh, his bid, as submitted was, was, he would follow, could follow that.
Okay.
There's a sentence in there about using an alternative method by Mid-America, and is that still going to have a, I don't know, do you even get a guarantee for this kind of work?
Yes, you do. Um, what we, what we had done, there's a couple different methods, um, actually Guardian and Armor, that uses a fiberglass-type patch over larger cracks. The reason we, we put in the alternate method, primarily for the south courts, which are concrete, as I mentioned, where they can use a polyurethane elastic-type, uh, sealant, which had, which were, they had done in, in 1995, that process. So it was a, it was an approved application, uh, even though we had specified that, uh, and we did this all by unit price. So we had the unit price figures for all the, the lineage of the, on the different cracks, the different types. And, uh, so we're, we're fine with the, with that other alternate type of, uh, process.
Okay. Additional questions of Mr. Snyder?
Thank you very much. I'd invite any public comment. Commission action?
Mayor, I would move that we, uh, award a contract to Mid-America Court Works of Wichita, uh, yeah, of Wichita, Kansas, for the Oakdale Park Tennis Court Repair and Resurfacing Project 07-2636, in the amount of $51,220.
Second.
Motion is to award a contract to Mid-America Court Works, in the amount of $51,220, for the Oakdale Park Tennis Courts Repair and Resurfacing Project. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That passes five to zero.
Item 8.5, authorize an agreement for the comprehensive downtown public lighting and analysis with Booker Willis and Ratliff Corporation.
Mr. Gage?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As you know, downtown public lighting has been a topic of discussion for, oh, probably about two years. Uh, currently downtown, we have approximately 366 pedestrian lights that line our sidewalks. We also have a lot of high bay streetlights that provide light to the driving area. Um, the lights have been in place since the 1980s with a major downtown renovation that took place at that time. Since that time, obviously, the lights and where, our focus has been primarily on the pedestrian lights, uh, but, uh, lights have aged, um, they've deteriorated to a certain degree, maintenance has been a concern, and, uh, there's been discussions about, uh, existing style, new styles, and so forth. Um, primarily from a staff perspective, replacement parts, uh, continue to be an issue as we go into the future with continuing to maintain these lights. We also have a few areas around the fringe areas of our downtown that, which we've seen some investment, and aren't really, aren't currently in the area that includes lighting, and, uh, those are areas we want to look at with this review. Um, so, uh, as a result of all that, not too many months ago, the Salina Downtown Ecor Organization, uh, requested formally that the city conduct a lighting study to determine the costs and benefits of completing lighting replacement. They offered up to 20% or 5,000, whichever is, uh, well, 20% up to 5,000 for this project. Um, what we've put together then is, we have a study area which is attached as Exhibit A. It includes a, a good part, not all of the downtown area, and, and quite honestly, in the areas that we have, if there's ever an area that's excluded, if, once we complete this, it's pretty easy to, to adapt this to, you know, another block over. So we're not real concerned about, uh, leaving somebody out when we look at the lighting in the future here. But, uh, basically what this does is it provides a full lighting review, because the first question, if we're even going to consider replacement, is how do we properly light the various areas, whether they be sidewalks, tunnels, uh, the arcades, parking lots. So you really need to do that, and at the same time, we want to make sure that we don't create a lighting nuisance for, say, loft dwellers up above. And there's, there's really more to that than just saying, let's just put a light here. So this would, this would do that. Uh, they would perform related electrical calculations, uh, we certainly wouldn't want to leave that out. Uh, we would evaluate and report future lighting options in, in coordination with SDI input related to style issues. Uh, we would also, and this is a big part of it too, review the refurbishing cost of the existing lighting. And this, the refurbishing would include the high bay streetlights, because whatever we do, we know they're going to be refurbishing, and those would be included in the refurbishing aspect of it only. We're not looking at replacing any of the high bay streetlights. Um, the review would provide options, costs, and recommendations. Uh, there'd be a public presentation of a draft plan to get some input and then finalize that plan. Uh, and then obviously, a final report with recommendations. This project is scheduled to take 90 days. Uh, it's, it's being requested that we funded out a general fund contingency, uh, just because this really hadn't taken structure until the 2007 budget was in place. Um, the recommended act, or the alternative actions are to provide authorization to the mayor to enter into an agreement for a comprehensive pay plan. Whoops, that's a typo, Commissioners, on a copy and paste, but on a comprehensive lighting study for the downtown, uh, with Booker Willis and Ratliff Corporation, in the amount of $21,635, or obviously not to provide authorization at this time. Uh, be happy to answer any questions that you might have related to this project.
Questions of Mr. Gage?
Seems like the, the going rate for a consultant for about anything is 20 to $25,000.
That's starter. That's just a starter.
And, as, as I'm sitting here, I'm looking that we just, we just approved Wilson and Company doing a Salina Master Utility Plan for East Salina. Now, that to me seems like that really might require some work and some comprehensive planning. That was $25,000. But we're going to do this, I mean, it seems a little bit subjective to me, a little bit with, uh, basically subjective aesthetics that we're dealing with. And, and obviously, there's going to be some, some lighting issues you talked about that, that require more than just saying, we're going to stick a light here. But is $21,000, I mean, is that in line with doing a whole, is, is that price in line? To me, it seems like we're paying $4,000 and getting a whole master utility plan for East Salina.
Yeah. I, I think, uh, what, which, the part of this is going to take the most time. First of all, it's going to, it's not going to be dealing with style issues of, of future lights. That's going to be pretty easy. Uh, and at some point, there is going to be a cost estimated, or estimation for various lighting pieces for certain styles. That, that really isn't going to take much time. The real timing is, is going to really be doing the lighting review. They're going to look at this whole downtown area, and in each of the areas determine, and what happens is, is first of all, they look at the area, they determine what type of light you need in that area, not too much, not too little. Uh, you don't want to disrupt other areas. And, and then you do look a little bit at styles, because there are lights that'll shine up and out and down and so forth. So you do want to match the right type of light with the right type of area. Uh, and then also, you look at the, uh, the, uh, foot candle issues and the strength of the lighting and so forth. And so there's quite a bit of time that's really into just analyzing lighting for the area. And it's, it's as if you didn't have lighting in the downtown at all, and you come in and say, okay, we're going to put lighting in. Because what we have today is, uh, there are certain areas that are lighted fairly well, and certain areas that really aren't lighted very well. And so I'm not sure that there was a real in-depth comprehensive review of lighting needs when the original lights were put in. They look nice, and they serve a pretty good purpose. Uh, and there are also a lot of those, and I'm talking to pedestrian lights particularly. But, uh, there are lighting issues when you, when a person's going to walk from a parking lot into a commercial area. Uh, so there's lots of different lighting issues that if you, if you, if you didn't recognize what goes into it, you wouldn't really, I mean, it'd be hard to understand the time that really goes into that review. That's going to be a good part of it. Uh, there'll be some time on electrical calculations. We, obviously, we want to make certain that whatever we do, that, uh, the electrical system's adequate, or if it's not, we need to know what the upgrades are going to be and what costs those will have. Um, as I mentioned, and there's going to be some time on refurbishing. When we look at the existing lights, if we refurbish those lights, there's certain, certain ways that you do that. We're not actually going to go out, and, there's, there's a real question of can you even do it in place? Probably not, with overspray issues and preparation issues. It's probably a good chance you're going to have to take them all out individually, uh, and then refurbish them. Uh, so there's going to be some time in that, and, and a little bit of time. That's not going to be a primary part of it, but there is going to be some time in that. And then taking all that information, saying, these are the options, costs, and recommendations. I think once you get all that information, to get to the options and recommendations isn't going to be too big a deal. But most of it's going to be in the lighting review, really saying, how do you light this area? What type of light? How much? Where does it go? Um, and you probably will not see a recommendation on the new lighting side that spaces the lights as closely as they're spaced today. I think there are lots of lighting options, whether they be a single, um, lamp or a dual lamp system, that you can light more area with fewer lights.
So when we get proposals, do they ever give us a breakdown of how much time they really think this is going to take and what the hourly rate is?
Yeah, I think, I'm trying to see on the back of this.
There's a chart.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Yeah, on the, on the back of this, Commissioner, they do break down the, uh, the various activities, and then the, uh, they have the rates for the various folks involved, and a number of hours for each of those, so you can look through that.
My mistake.
It's okay, we like to repress that part, too.
One question I have. Um, SDI is going to fund up to $5,000, so really, it's only going to cost the city $16,000, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So see, Aaron, it's only going to be $16,000.
Well, it's a bargain at that, then.
I think the good thing is that we, we need to do the analysis, because if you do put in new lights, we really need to put the right lights in the right spot, because, as we've seen with these lights, they'll be there for 30 years. So that's real important. But I think the other aspect of this that's really important as well is, there has been a lot of discussion and even debate about existing lights, uh, new lights, and we need to put real cost to all those options, and that'll, that'll give both the SDI group, the downtown, uh, business owners, and also you, information that you need in making a longer-term decision. And to answer your first question, I'm not sure there is a consulting agreement that's less than 20.
Right.
Mine?
Well, I know from various volunteer committees I've served on downtown, the discussion's been going on a lot longer than two years. It's got to be at least closer to six or so on, uh, on the present decorative lights. Um, I kind of agree with Commissioner Peck. It seems like a lot of money for what appears to be the necessary work, but, you know, it's hard to judge. I mean, I've owned a light meter. I could, but, uh, anyway, it is, it is a project that we need to get off dead center, because we've talked about it for years.
Thank you very much. I'd entertain any public comment, if there is any. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor, I would, uh, move that we authorize the mayor to enter an agreement for a comprehensive light study downtown Salina with Booker Willis and Ratliff Corporation, in the amount of $21,635.
Second.
Motion is to authorize an agreement for the, for a comprehensive downtown public lighting analysis with Booker Willis and Ratliff, in the amount of $21,635. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That passes five to zero. We do have a request for an executive session.
Mayor Gilkey, I move that city commission recess into executive session for 20 minutes to discuss with the city attorney a matter subject to attorney-client privilege, for the reason that public discussion of the matter would waive that privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matter. And reconvene in this room at 5:10.
Second.
Motion is to go into executive session for 20 minutes. Is there any action anticipated afterwards?
We do not anticipate any action.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We will move into executive session.